I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Goodman?
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Okay, we have a couple of public hearings that we need to dispense with in the beginning. I don't think they will take very long, but Mr. Patton, the first one is a public hearing and discussion, basically, I think the council will actually be discussing this later on in the agenda, but it has to do with the Canton 2040 Comprehensive Plan and 10-year update. Mr. Patton?
(inaudible) It is a requirement of the state's minimum planning procedures and requirements that are related to our major 10-year update.
This is on the agenda for discussion later. I will answer and address things at that point in time, leave it for the public for comments.
Okay. Do we have anyone who would like to speak relative to? Mr. Weaver?
Thank you for recognizing me to speak, Mr. Mayor, members of council. In regards to the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, I would ask council to continue, as far as extending the trails, I would like to see the bowling park to Heritage Park connection being made in addition to the extensions that are on the Etowah Park. Also, I would ask that you continue to hold Cherokee County accountable for its promises that it has made to you under the consolidated terms of the agreement like you did last month, as far as the Station 9 and 16, revamping that and making sure that that's adequately staffed with all the personnel and fire department equipment that they would need to provide excellent service to the city, which I know that they're going to do, but to continue to hold them accountable there. I'm also going to ask you to continue to work with the state partners, with the Georgia Department of Transportation, with the Georgia Highway 520 and 140 projects, especially with the bottleneck situation with State Route 20 coming up for improvements in the next coming years, going all the way out to Coming and eventually to Beaufort. And finally, I would ask that you reach out to Cherokee County, Cherokee Area Transportation Services, the CATS bus services, provide local fixed route service here for a number of years after the county took it over from the city several years ago, as it currently does not serve the Chattahoochee area technical college there on the Bluffs Technology Parkway. I'd ask to see if the city could work with them, as it is part of the plan to get that route extended to cover that educational facility. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak regarding the proposed 2040 Comprehensive Plan? It's your opportunity. Okay, if not, we will close the public hearing on the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, and we will now open the public hearing and discussion of the capital improvements element of the Canton 2040 Comprehensive Plan. Patton?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, council members, this will be the public hearing in regards to the capital improvements element, which is a part of the comprehensive plan. It is required by Georgia's impact fee laws and the minimum planning standards for comprehensive plans. Capital improvement element is specifically done because the city of Canton has an impact fee program. This is on the agenda for discussion later on in the agenda, so I will go over the CIE and answer questions at that time.
Okay. Do we have anyone who would like to comment on the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, capital improvements element? Mr. Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for recognizing me to speak on second occasion. I read the entire capital improvements plan for the purposes of impact fee taxation in the city, and I agree with all of the projects that have been listed, can take it in fact that Canton's expected to grow by some 15,000 people encompassing about thirteen and a third percent of the county's overall population by 2040. But with that comes a need for expanded infrastructure, both as far as roads, water and sewage and other things, and I would ask that council moving forward be leery of knowing that these obligations are forthcoming from continuing to allow others to escape the impact fee taxation, because it seems to me to be self-defeating to know that these things are required, but then in certain instances waiving those fees. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else want to speak? If not, we will close the public hearing for the Canton capital improvements elements of the Canton 2040 Comprehensive Plan. All right. I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight, and we will begin by, actually, I have a couple of proclamations, which seems like we're getting more and more of those. The first one is the General Aviation Appreciation Month 2018. You know, our local airport is very, very important to the economy of the area, quite honestly, and it has been improving for quite a number of years. Back in the eighties, I was fortunate enough to be the county commissioner at that time, and actually what was happening is basically nothing as far as the airport. It was almost a place where maybe two or three people that had airplanes just played around with them, nothing else. But it made sense to me at that time that the county actually owned that property. So it made sense to me to actually put that in the name of the authority and get some good members on it and get those people who are excited about aviation to do some things. And that's what we did. We deeded the property to the airport authority, and everything had really, really got started then to where it is today. I was there on, a couple of days ago, for a groundbreaking for widening of the airport runway. Ultimately, they will be doing an extension of the runway, but they are going to have to widen it by 100 feet. It's about a five-point something million-dollar project that they're getting ready to do. So that airport is improving, and it's very important, as all aviation is as far as our city is concerned. But let me read this. "The city of Canton in the state of Georgia has significant interest in the continued vitality of general aviation, aircraft manufacturing aviation, educational institutions, aviation organizations, and community airports. Whereas general aviation and Cherokee County Regional Airport have an immense economic impact on the city of Canton, and whereas Georgia is the home to 95 public-use general aviation airports, which serve 19,495 pilots and 8,114 active general aviation aircraft. And whereas Georgia is the home to 95 fixed base operators, 127 repair stations, 119 heliports, 15 FAA-approved pilot schools, 3,152 student pilots, and 3,345 flight instructors. And whereas general aviation airports in Georgia contribute more than $1.2 billion annually to the state's economy. And whereas general aviation not only supports Georgia's economy, it improves overall quality of life by supporting emergency medical and health care services, law enforcement, firefighting, and disaster relief, and by transporting business travelers to their destinations quickly and safely. And whereas the nation's aviation infrastructure represents an important public benefit, and congressional oversight should be in place of this system to ensure that it remains a public system and serves communities of all sizes. Now therefore, Ijean Harbigan, Mayor of the city of Canton, do hereby proclaim general aviation a vital strategic resource to the city of Canton and declare November as General Aviation Appreciation Month." The next proclamation that we have is in conjunction with the March of Dimes Foundation, and it is a 2018 Prematurity Awareness Month proclamation. Whereas the March of Dimes Foundation is a pioneer in improving the health of infants and women of childbearing age by preventing birth defects, premature birth, and infant mortality. And whereas the March of Dimes in 2003 launched a prematurity campaign to address the crisis of premature birth and help families have full-term healthy babies. And whereas the March of Dimes has set a national goal of reducing preterm birth to 5.5% in every state by 2030, which will result in a healthier start in life for tens of thousands of infants. And whereas in 2017, 14,700 babies were born premature in the state of Georgia, representing 11.2% of all state births. And whereas Georgia receives a grade of D and a disparity index ranking of 1.32 on the March of Dimes 2017 Premature Birth Report Card. And whereas the March of Dimes in Georgia has worked extensively to promote maternal mortality prevention policies that help to reduce premature birth and promote health equity. And whereas the March of Dimes in Georgia looks forward to partnering with the mayor and the city of Canton in response to the continued crisis of premature birth. And whereas the month of November is recognized as World Prematurity Awareness Month to bring about recognition of this global health crisis, and November the 17th is recognized as Prematurity Awareness Day across the United States. Now therefore, Ijean Harbigan, Mayor of the city of Canton, do hereby extend special recognition to the March of Dimes in Georgia and declare November the 17th, 2018, as Prematurity Awareness Day in the city of Canton." We have in the agenda, we will consider the approval of the agenda. First, I would like to add that we will need an executive session to discuss real estate and litigation. Are there any other additions to the agenda or changes? We have a motion to approve. Mr. Grant?
(inaudible).
Mr. Goodman seconded the motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no? All members voting for the motion. You have in your agenda package the minutes from the Personnel Committee meeting on October the 12th, as well as the council meeting draft minutes from October the 18th. Are there any changes or corrections to be made to those? If not, I entertain a motion to approve those two sets of minutes. Oh, I'm sorry.
(inaudible) for the council meeting, and so I will abstain from voting.
Okay. Okay, so Mr. Grant and Ms. Wilson will be abstaining from the approval of the minutes. Any, any other comments? If not, I entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
(inaudible).
Okay, Mr. Yon made the motion, Mr. Goodman seconded that motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
(inaudible).
All members voting for the motion with the exception of Mr. Grant and Ms. Wilson abstaining. Okay. You have in your agenda package, for informational purposes only, the September financials. Are there any questions or comments regarding those? Mr. Grant?
I was just, want to ask Mr. Ingram, since this was September 30th, is it, would this be considered the year-end?
Yes, sir.
So these would be final numbers for year-end?
They will, but they're unaudited, so they could, could be adjusted.
Could change. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Now we will go, you go to our 10-minute public input, David Johnson. Now, once again, what we have here in our 10-minute public input, which sometimes lasts longer, sometimes doesn't last that long, is a monologue. We don't get into a discussion with anyone. It's for us to just listen to whatever the public wishes, which is to say, whatever they wish to say. Okay? Go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. Thanks for letting me speak. My name is David Johnson. I'm currently a City of Canton resident for over 14 years, and I currently live in Governor's Walt. Many of my neighbors received a letter serving notice about a proposed rezoning across the Etowah River from our neighborhood and the proposed 45-acre Etowah Park East. I'm sure the city received the same notice as well, since the city owns property just across the river. The subject property of the notice is land currently zoned as agricultural within the county's future land use plant, showing it to be a natural preserve. The property is current, the property is an unincorporated island surrounded by the city of Canton. The owners have informed us they want to have the property rezoned for light industrial so they can move a batch concrete plant that's currently located off Railroad Street. This would be spot zoning, as nothing else in the area is zoned industrial. I provided you guys kind of a map of the location for that. Per the Cherokee County zoning ordinance, light industrial is defined as follows in Section 7, 1 through 13, Light Industrial District. The purpose of this district is to provide suitable areas for industrial development but whose proximity to residential or commercial districts make it desirable to limit the intensity of industrial operations and processes. This district limits industrial, manufacturing, and warehousing uses to those which are wholly conducted indoors, with the exception of limited amounts of outdoor storage which shall be screened and situated in a side or rear yard. Permitted uses of the light industrial are those which are not characterized by smoke, dust, fumes, gas, heat, glare, fire hazards, noise, vibrations, and other nuisances, which all pretty much, at least the noise and the dust, would come from a concrete batch plant. The access for this property, as you guys all know, is through the entrance of Walmart at Riverstone Parkway. It goes beside Chick-fil-A and other retail. It includes a very busy four-way stop that is just a mess to get through when you're trying to get your Chick-fil-A. It is unlikely Keith Drive was designed or constructed to handle that type of heavy truck traffic on a daily basis. The Etowah River is our greatest natural resource the city of Canton has. 100% of this property that they're wanting rezoned is located either in the flood plain or there's a slight part that is like in a 2%, but it's still in a flood hazard. So 100% of this property is potential to flood. The current concrete batch plan, plant is located downstream from the city of Canton's water intake. This move would put the plant upstream from the water intake and could potentially cause problems with the drinking water quality for the city of Canton. Lastly, I have the honor of currently serving on the Canton Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee and aware that Canton has further, city of Canton has further plans to develop that Etowah River Walk. This rezoning and batch concrete plant movement just doesn't make sense considering the potential economic impact future Etowah River development offers the city and its residents. In closing, I'd like to ask, since the city received the notice of this possible rezoning, that the city council would consider providing input to the county, asking them to deny this spot zoning in order to protect the city neighborhoods, our city park properties, as well as the Etowah River, that would all be negatively impacted on this. If you'd like more information, we have created a website, StopTheConcretePlant.org, and I'd like to take a, to thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Thomas Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for recognizing me to speak on third occasion. For the public comment portion of tonight's agenda, I'd like to bring a few items to council's attention. First, to start on a somber note, as I trust all of you are aware, I did send email and tried to reach out to each of you per telephone in regards to the activity at Railroad Street. I do ask that each of you look into it. I know the city is going to look into it and ask that you get a grip on that, because if you don't, I'm afraid someone else will. Secondly, I looked over the Personnel Manual and the Council Manual packet that you have for tonight, later in the agenda, and I noticed one or two things that I'd like to bring to your attention that I feel are inconsistent. First off, on page three, under the, under the Council Policy Manual Procedures, under the full packet of the agenda, there is a conflict between codified city ordinance and the Council Policy Manual itself. The Council Policy Manual suggests that any person who wish, or who is desirous to have an item added to the agenda as a member of the public, has to approach the city two full calendar weeks in advance, whereas your city ordinance is only require five days. So I would ask that you take a look at that when you review that later this evening to see if that conflict can be fixed. And the City Code section I cite to justify my comment is City of Canton Code Section 2-86, subsection A. Also, on page 27 of your Employment Manual, since it is a voting season, I thought it would be appropriate to ask you all to consider whether it would be appropriate under the Employee Manual to add language to, I guess you could say, mirror what state law already does regarding leave for employees for voting purposes. Georgia law has a specific state statute that allows an employee and mandates an employer must allow an employee to go have a two-hour protected leave to go vote, and I can't find that anywhere in the manual, which I found was odd. And it was only in the forefront of my mind, even though I understand, I'm not looking at it from an employee, because I'm not an employee, but we discussed it at our work, and I saw that the manual, when I was reading over all of this paperwork, that was an attachment to all tonight's agenda and all of the different sections. I saw that your Employee Manual doesn't have any language regarding protected leave for voting purposes. And finally, I was going to ask the city manager to again consider sidewalk and sidewalk crossing infrastructure along Academy and Archer Streets here. I noticed when I parked over there at the Harris Development Property Auxiliary Parking Lot, coming across the street and also right here at the corner, there's no adequate crossing infrastructure, so I asked the city to take a look at that, since you do utilize those parking spots and these for the public to park to come here. So, thank you.
Thank you. John Peterson?
Hello and good evening to the council and to the public. My name is John Peterson, and I am a senior at Cherokee High School, and I am the group leader of Students Demand Action Cherokee County. Next week, Cherokee County residents have a chance to tell legislators how they've been doing through their ballots. The people of Canton have an opportunity to directly affect what legislators and governors occupy seats like the one of the Governor's Mansion in Georgia, state congressional seats, and even seats in our nation's House and Senate. Many Americans, however, have either never gained an appreciation for our civic duty of voting, or they have lost their interest in politics because they feel alienated by a lack of direct action from their representatives against issues that they care about. Political apathy is a major issue in our nation, especially among American students and young people like myself. The Pew Research Center reported that 22- to 29-year-olds make up only 6% of consistent voters in recent national elections. Compare that with, say, voters who are 65 and older, who make up up to 30% of consistent voters. My organization, Students Demand Action for Gun Sense in Cherokee County, wants to change that in Canton, in Woodstock, in Holly Springs, and all around our county. In fact, we strongly believe that there is one issue that ignites students across all races, classes, experiences, and especially political parties. That issue is gun violence. According to CDC fatal injury reports in 2016, firearms are the second-leading cause of death for American children and teens, second only to auto accidents. Nearly 1,600 children and teens every year die by gun homicides. And that's not even counting suicide rates, as well as family fire incidents where guns are improperly stored. According to the American Academy of Pediatrics, for children under the age of 13, these gun homicides most frequently occur in the home and are often connected to domestic and family violence. So what's the solution that I'm proposing? Am I saying that we should ban all gun sales? Am I saying that we should ask the government to collect rifles and make sure Americans are no longer entitled to a Second Amendment right? Absolutely not. That's not what we should do at all, because the Second Amendment is a unique and vital part of American democracy and the experience of many Americans living especially in the South. Instead, let's take one example of a policy that the organization that organizes Students Demand Action proposes. That policy is universal background checks on all gun sales. It's not just these gun safety advocacy groups that support this, because 94% of Americans, according to PolitiFact, support universal background checks on all gun sales. Some would say it's just common sense. But why haven't we seen common sense background checks in legislation like this being passed if so many Americans support it? The answer is, the NRA has acted swiftly to either change Americans' minds, or where they fail, by politicians who are, who are willing to vote against gun control measures, because they have spent tens of millions of dollars in lobbying to either make us think differently about gun safety legislation. They make us feel as if there's some sort of overarching government power that wants to take weapons away and destroy all instances of American freedom. They create a culture of fear that makes us more willing to give up our safety than put common sense controls on our rights. You wouldn't, for instance, be allowed to yell "fire" in a crowded building. Does that mean that you don't have a First Amendment right to free speech? No, not at all. It just means that for cases of safety, we need to limit certain rights according to common sense. I implore everyone in this room on the 6th this month to vote. Quite simply, Canton's residents deserve better than a candidate in the pocket of the gun lobby. This election day, all council members and Cherokee County residents in the room are invited and welcomed to the March of the Polls event at 11:00 a.m. in front of this very city hall. We will be marching from city hall to, in, to in front of the polling center to increase voter turnout and raise awareness for gun sense candidates, as well as raising awareness for our civic duty to get out and vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We'll begin with old business. Discussion, the Planning Commission Recommendation of Case MP 1808-001, C463 Fund LLC requesting to amend the Riverstone Master Plan for PODI to increase residential density from six units per acre to 16 units per acre. Mr. Patton?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. This item is back before the council, it was tabled from previous discussions. Canton Planning Commission did conduct a public hearing on this September 17th, 2018. They did recommend approval of the master plan amendment with condition that the developer submit $75,000 into escrow account for civilization, the intersection Reinhardt College Parkway, Reservoir Drive, and install median breaks at entrances to their proposed development Reinhardt College Parkway and Reservoir Drive upon engineering approval. Our office did supply updated information from the Board of Education as requested by the council at the last meeting. That was emailed out to you all week before last. Council had requested additional information in regards to traffic information. Croy Engineers on behalf of C463 did update their traffic impact analysis. Our office received that just before 5:00 yesterday. We emailed that out. The findings from what I looked at today basically indicated that because this is a change from commercial to residential, there would be a decrease in traffic impacts. Their forecast does reflect that in the year 2020, the intersection, it's their opinion, would meet muster, if you will, for a traffic warrant by GDOT at that intersection. I'm here to answer any questions. Mr. Dobree, the person with Croy that did the traffic study, is in the audience. If I can't answer a question that you might have, I can get him to answer a question.
Is there anyone to have an estimate of the cost of signalizing that intersection?
The last time that I'd really asked about the cost of signalization, it was somewhere between 150,000 and 180,000. If I'm not mistaken, Mr. Mayor, and you might recall, I believe that was the cost on State Route 20 coming highway, that inner section that was signaledized before the main entrance into Canton Place, Canton Market Place. And if I'm not mistaken, the cost of that, I recall council talking with somewhere in the 150...
That's about seven or eight years ago, probably.
Yes.
Something like that, yeah. Let me ask one other question. It says, "The applicants shall provide median breaks along Reinhardt College Parkway and Reservoir Drive." What if they can't? DOT's one that would have to approve those, right?
Well, the one on Reservoir Drive would be up to city engineers and all, but the median break along Reinhardt College Parkway would have to have GDOT approval. That's part of...
So what would happen if they could not get that approval?
Then they would have to provide that second ingress egress, another route, whether it be access to the roadway that provides ingress egress for the median school, but alternate method would have to be provided.
May, maybe you don't have to say that in here, do you think?
If that's what city council's preference is in regards to the specific language of that condition, we can... that condition, we can certainly add that in prior to the next council meeting.
Okay. It just seemed to me that it leaves it hanging there. It says they have to provide something that we don't know that they can provide, which is a median break on a state highway. Anyone else have any question? Ms. Wilson?
Motion to deny.
We're making, I thought this was discussion, make a decision in two weeks.
Yeah, this is, that's what this was. Hopefully, we weren't going to vote, but I mean, that's entirely up to the council, one way or the other. Well, we tabled it, but I don't know that it was intended to vote, but if you made a motion, that's, that's, that's fine with me, I guess. We got a motion and a second, right? Ms. McGrew made this. Yeah, Bill and I talked about that this afternoon, and we both was of the opinion at that time that this was a discussion, but it does say that. It does, indeed. Well, we've got a motion. We've got a second. Ms. Wilson made the motion. Discussion, Mr. Grant.
So, the motion is to deny the increase in density?
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Someone from C463 Fund would like to speak to council.
Well, we will have to, I don't know if we could do that or not. This is a zoning issue, Mr. City Attorney. We've had the public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
That's true. I mean, the public hearing is already, so it's up to the council, I guess, to do whether they would want, we've done it both ways, let's put it that way, but the, but the public hearing has already been held, so unless there's anything you want to hear.
Yeah, more recently, and we have concluded that it wouldn't be right to let one do the other and not the other, because without notifying everybody on both sides that they would have that opportunity. Anyone else have any comments, questions? Okay. We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no? All members voting for the motion. And the next item is, ties in with that as well, is Discussion and Possible Action, Planning Commission Recommendation for Case CUP 1808-001, C463 Fund Requesting Conditional Use Permit. Not sure that, how that works out with the denial of the first one, but do we have any comments or questions regarding that one? Do we need to even vote on the second? We do need to vote on the second. Yeah. Say, we do need to vote. Motion to deny. A second. Ms. Wilson made the motion. Ms. McGrew seconded the motion. Any other questions or discussion? What's that? No. No, unfortunately, our, our policy has been that if we let one side speak, because they've already had a public hearing, they've already been, had that opportunity to speak to the Planning Commission, and I think most of the council were in attendance, or at least some of them, I know. I'd love to, but we, it wouldn't be fair to the, any opposition that may be out there. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Questions? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, no? All members voting for the motion. Thank you. Okay. Under new business, Discussion of the Canton 2040 Comprehensive Plan 10-Year Update. I, this item is, is one, I mean, I've got a number of questions on it. I'm not sure we're going to get all our questions and comments satisfied tonight, but, and I'm almost thinking we need another, we need another few hours work session on this thing, because I, I've got some comments here on, on several things, and some of it is very minor and maybe a little tacky in one, in one sense, but I think it needs to be. And just one or two I would ask here, and for instance, in sort of the prelude to this, this item, if you look on page 12, for instance, and, and, Mr. Patton, you can probably answer this for me. When I look at that population projections, I think I know what was done there, but it gives a sort of misleading appearance there when you see what Black and Beach's projections are. And you know that's really not population projections, I don't think. I think that's water customer projections.
That is correct. Black and Beach did do a population projection that is tied to water customers. Ross and Associates with our capital improvements element and an update on our methodology also did a population projection. Then the staff worked on a straight line projection utilizing the U.S. Census, American Community Survey, and ARC projections to come up with a straight line method of projection. And you can see that there's two that are somewhat close, and the third is a little bit off, but it gives a range of what the population projection would be over the 20-year period.
So, am I wrong that that 19525 is not number of what customers, but the population in 2016?
I would have to check with Black and Beach study to see if that was water customers or if that was something they had done for a projection of a population in connection with the population water customers.
Well, it just looks odd. I mean, it really looks odd when you got 2016 populations of one at 25,000, a little over 25, and one at 26, and then Black and Beach is at 195. I mean, that's, that's a pretty substantial difference.
I can get that answer to the council members.
Okay, that's fine. We're not, we're not going to solve all that today. Mr. Estes? Oh, sorry about that. Mr. Estes, go ahead.
Mr. Patton, when is this due for submission? Is that February, correct?
Our deadline for the comprehensive plan, as well as capital improvements element, is February 2019. There is a Atlanta Regional Commission and Georgia Department of Community Affairs required review that has to occur prior to city council coming back, if you will, and formally adopting. We have to formally adopt this by the end of February 2019. ARC and DCA, if I'm not mistaken, with the new minimum planning standards, they have up to 60 days to review the comprehensive plan, and then they would send any comments that they would have. We would have to address those prior to formal adoption and resubmit back to ARC and DCA. The capital improvements element, which is the next item, the requirements for the review of the capital improvements element, if I'm not mistaken, is 45 days. It's a little bit different.
No, I, my other comment would be, I think we did get a chance to review this, and there's just a ton of great work that's gone into this by the members, and I, I second the mayor's suggestion that maybe it is another work session to, to review so that we don't rush anything and, and again, spend some more time reviewing it, because there's some really good stuff here and here that we want to make sure that it and represented appropriately. So, that'd be my, my recommendation.
Yeah, I, I would say we, we do need to maybe have Mr. Pepper schedule a block of time there, maybe three or four hours, that we could sit down and really kind of go through this, because I don't want to embarrass anybody, but I don't know if everybody's read every word of this or not. I've read some of it, not all of it, but got into the, the meat of it. And I can tell you, there's a lot of information here, and folks on the 2040 Committee have done an excellent job in, in putting this together. But, I mean, I, I, some of the things, like, for instance, on page 13, let me mention that, it says Canton is less diverse than the metro area and state. That seems a little bit difficult for me when that's, maybe, maybe the percentages that I've been led to believe we have are not there. I thought we had about 30% Hispanic and about 10% or 11% African-American, which, which adds up to over 40%, and so that's, that says 73% are non-Hispanic white in, in the city of Canton. Now, maybe I've got these numbers wrong, I don't know, but I think to say that Canton is less diverse than the metro area and state, I'm not sure that's an accurate statement at this point. But anyway, I, I don't, that's, that's sort of, that's one of the tacky things.
Those numbers and percentages come straight out of U.S. Census, American Community Survey, and Atlanta Regional Commission data is where those percentages came from. The state minimum standards require the governments to address housing, as well as racial makeup population, in comparison format to the state, as well as the county that is involved with a, a city. The counties generally will have a similar type of a paragraph or a table, and they will usually have all of the city's makeup and housing within their comp planning table.
Well, maybe, maybe I had those percentages wrong, not as much as I thought that, I guess, in the Hispanic community, apparently, anyway.
And we can certainly go back and re-verify those numbers, but that, that is where the staff pulled those numbers, was from U.S. Census, American Community Survey, which is a part of the U.S. Census that does updates on the odd five-year cycle in between the 10-year U.S. Census counts, and then Atlanta Regional Commission numbers.
Is everyone in agreement that we just ask Mr. Pepper to set aside some time to go over this in the next week or two, maybe? Okay, all right. Okay, let's go to item B, Discussions, Canton Capital Improvements Element. That's, I think that's another one that we're going to have to set some time aside personally to take a look at. Anybody have any comments regarding that? There's a lot of information in that as well. Mr. Grant?
I had one comment. I saw one of the items, I can't, I can't find it now, but one of the items was from Marietta Highway and the expenditure for planning and redevelopment and adding the lanes and streets. And though in the comp plan, the report of, you know, accomplishments, the redevelopment for what we're calling central city or downtown, which we did the LCI update and the master plan, and then we're talking about Highway 5. And I brought this up, I think, in our last meeting there about this subject, but the Sunnyside area between those two areas. And, and I went through this again, and I didn't see, and it may be in here, if, if we have any goals or anything allocated toward, you know, redevelopment for that area, or studies, or master planning, or LCI extensions. I know we've talked about it several times, but
There's nothing in specifics for
We seem to be skipping over it time after time, and so, like.
Counselor Grant, there is nothing specific in the comp plan or the capital improvement element relative to Marietta Road improvements. That's the Sunnyside area. There was an old transportation project that did make some improvements to Marietta Road, almost all the way up to Marietta Highway, also had intersection improvements and included improvements out Hickory Flat Highway to I-575. That project was completed about two years ago. That specific project kind of came off the books, if you will. There's a general language within the body of the comp plan, talks about redevelopment areas. Sunnyside has been identified as a potential redevelopment area, even within the character area discussions. That was one of the older areas, going back to our comp plan from 10 years ago, that had been identified as a potential redevelopment areas, but there was not a specific line item in the work plan or the capital improvements element related to Marietta Road, or within the comp plan for a, if you will, Marietta Road area master plan or things of that nature. There is something in there relative to Marietta Highway in regards to a master plan for that corridor that would most likely have to be a city-county joint project.
Right, right. I guess I'm asking, like, in your opinion, should we have something in the plan for that?
If the city council wants us to add something specific for a sub-area master plan for Marietta Road or the Sunnyside area, we can certainly add that.
I mean, it seems like we're growing with, with the mill development.
There's a lot of redevelopment activity that's
And if we're looking at Highway 5, and I know we had a lot of discussions for that, and I, I know that that exit and that entrance off Hickory Flat Highway is, is a major gateway into the city, especially for people coming in from, from the south. I just, I think it's important, and I think it's also an area that certainly could benefit from that for our citizens, but.
And there, there has been a good bit of redevelopment that has occurred in the Marietta Road corridor, especially on the west side, as you're going up the hill. A lot of new residential development in the form of duplexes and some attached units, things of that nature, that have been occurring within the corridor over the last couple of years, and we expect us more of that to occur.
We can discuss, I know we're going to meet and discuss this more, but, but I would like to have a more extended, important conversation about that area.
Absolutely.
I, I just feel like we could just keep skipping over it, so, not intentionally, but it's, it gets talked about, but there's never any, like, plan of, plan of action for it, so, thank you.
Mr. Goodwin?
I'd like to chime in on that same thought. We have talked about that quite some amount there, and it seems that we did do something on the entrance coming off of I-575 to Marietta Highway, but we haven't done much other than, I think we did a little bit to the bridge there. But I agree with Bill on that. We, it is a gateway to the city. It is probably one of the rougher-looking gateways we have, and I'd like, I'm with him. I'd like to see, I think most of the council will agree, we'd like to see that moved along and make it a firm project in what we do in the near future, not keep pushing aside and saying, "Well, we got to do something. We really need to do something there."
Okay. Ms. McGrew?
Thank you. I believe a year or so ago, we had talked about including that area in an LCI plan update. Do you remember talking about that?
Yes, I remember. Discussion that that would be the next natural kind of extension to that.
When would it be time to think about doing an LCI plan update, including that extension?
The, Counselor McGrew, the next opportunity for LCI would be in the springtime.
Would we start the process in the spring?
Yes.
Do our grant proposal to the ARC?
Yes.
Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Should we start talking about it before then, or, or give ourselves a little time?
We can talk about it whenever council wants to talk about it.
Right. I knew you were going to say that.
Got a lot to talk about.
Thank you.
It's, I, I tend to agree with Mr. Grant there, that, you know, with, with the mill developing down there, there's going to be a lot of pressure for development in that area, all out through there, so it's just something we need something we need to consider there very strongly. Anyone else? Discussion of fee waiver requests submitted for Canton Community Ministries, Mr. Charles Davis.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I believe that Pastor Davis is here in the audience as well, but there was a smittle from Canton Community Ministries in regards to a request for a fee waiver in the amount of $20,866.94. They are in the process of building a new building at their site there off of Marietta Highway, an expansion of the school. Pastor Davis wants to come up and say anything, I'm here to answer any questions council might have.
What, what, what are those fees composed of? Impact fees?
Yes, sir, major portion is impact fees. Second page of the handout in your package, you should have where it reflects that $4,140.50 was in permit fees, plan review fees. The total amount of all of the impact fees assessed was $16,729.34.
Now, if the, if the city forgives impact fees, what, what's the consequences to the city? Any?
Well, the city, by state law, in our local impact fee ordinance, if the city does reduce or waive impact fees, the city does have to repay that impact fee fund from another source of city funds.
Okay, okay. And, and the total was $20,869?
As the total, they've requested, the total of the impact fee portion is $16,729.34.
Any comments? Mr. Grant.
I just had one question. I know the, the application is made under the organization, which is, I know it's a 501(c)(3). I just want to confirm, the school itself, is it also non, nonprofit?
I would think so, yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Dionne.
My question would be, have we had other similar requests, and what have we traditionally done? What precedent have we got for this?
There have been other requests to waive or reduce impact fees. I've been with the city eleven years. There was one approval for a project in downtown Canton on Main Street, the 151 West Main Street building. There was a 90% reduction, but the city did reimburse the impact fee fund within 12 months in accordance with the requirements. All other requests to waive or reduce impact fees since that time have been denied.
And are any of those for nonprofits?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Goodwin.
I'd like to see if Reverend Davis would like to say something on this. Would you like, would you like to speak a little bit on this? Sir? I thought he was in there. Okay.
Oh.
No, there he is. Yeah? I didn't understand it a little bit.
We would appreciate any consideration. We have been where we are in our location for 45 years. We have Little One's Early Learning Center, Community Christian School, and also Canton Community Congregation. And we are just trying to, we need a little room for school, education, and assembly, and we thank you for your consideration. Bob is our builder. He can answer any questions you may have concerning the building.
Mr. Mayor, council members, this, one thing I want to say was this new building is, is, it's not reflected in the plans, but it's replacing that was a pre-manufactured classrooms that were there already. It's been there for over 10 years, so that was removed, and this new building is going in the exact same location, if that has any impact on, on the decision.
Okay. Any, any comments, questions?
It's replacing.
The square footage is almost identical. The, the pre-manufactured classrooms were like 2,400 square feet. This footprint is 25 of eight on a full daylight basement.
Thank you.
Ms. Wilson.
I don't have a question for them, I have a question for Mr. Peppers.
Okay.
What are the funding sources that we use to replace any impact fees?
Oh. Gotcha.
So, so it would, it would depend on the area of the impact fee. In the instance of transportation, we would probably use SPOLOST or General Fund. Same thing with recreation. Actually, we wouldn't have recreation on the commercial one. Fire would be one we would have to pay directly to, and so that would probably come from the General Fund. Same thing for police. As it relates to other fees, one thing I did want to note is, I do know that we have waived building permit fees on nonprofit projects, at least since I've been here, I believe. A couple of years ago, we waived some fees, maybe it was signed permit fees for Angel House and a project they were doing on Hospital Road. So, the non-impact fee side of the equation, we have waived in the past for nonprofits. But the impact fee, I don't know that we've ever had a request from a nonprofit on that, so.
Okay. That answer your question? Okay.
It's gonna be from SPOLOST?
It, it would be project, depending exactly which fund source it would come from. But, but SPOLOST would be one that we could use, depending on the project that's being done.
All right, well-
If I might add, Mr. Peppers, looking at me, it's either gonna come out of SPOLOST funding or the General Fund. Don't think that you could repay the impact fee program out of the water and sewer.
We could pay the, we could pay the police portion out of rental car tax, because that's an eligible expenditure for rental car tax. I don't remember if fire was a category of rental car tax or not.
And you could have been looking at Ms. Ingram instead of me.
I was looking for help from any of you on that one.
I, I should have asked you, Mr. Ingram.
General Fund is what I was suggesting, from $16,000.
The, the-
There may be some issues with some of those.
Right. The one that was, the impact fee that we waived before for 151 Main Street, was that taken from SPOLOST, or do you remember?
That was done well in advance of Mr. Ingram coming onboard with the city of Canton. If I'm not mistaken, that was done in maybe 2009, and former CFO, city managers did that reimbursement, and I would have to ask Mr. Ingram and his staff to go back and research how that was repaid. I would tend to think it was probably General Fund, though, most likely.
Okay, well, this is, this was for discussion tonight, and so we will mull this over, if the council can mull this over between now and two weeks, in which we'll make a decision at that point and vote on the 15th, I guess. Okay? All right. Discussion of special events application for street closures, Canton Optimist Club. Ms. Gold.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. You have in your pack had a special event application from the Canton Optimist Club. They would like to close the street on December 1st for their annual Christmas parade. They've been doing this Christmas parade for, I think, Mr. Rogers, the chairman, told me 31-plus years. There is a slight change, actually, it's a pretty good change, to the application in that they were originally asking that the street be closed beginning at noon on December 1st, but now they have agreed to change the location of the stage to the parking lot between the Water and Sewer Authority Building and Canton Park, which is where it will be placed the night before for Love Light's Tree, and they are requesting this street be closed at 5:30 in preparation of the 6 o'clock PM parade.
Okay. So, it's, it's okay to vote on this at the next meeting, the 15th?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone have any questions or comments? Okay, thank you. Okay, discussion to provide sanitary sewer service to North Georgia Angel House.
Angel House is located up on Sam Nelson Road, just outside the city limits. I believe they are served water by the city of Waleska, and they're on a septic system. Their system is failing, and for the past year and a half, they, we've had discussions with them about tying into our system. I guess they finally have got all their agreements in place and are looking to tie on to the, to our system in, I think it's the Preserve at Canyon Ridge. It's all subject to city of Waleska granting release of that property from their service delivery area, and it would be for sewer only, not water.
Did, did you say they, Waleska, we have a document where they have relinquished that area?
We, yeah, we would need them, I mean, obviously, before we can-
We would need that.
-take it off. Yeah, they would have to approve it.
And, and of course, then the, the Angel House would be required to acquire the easements-
Yes, they're in-
-that are necessary.
They're in the process of doing that, and, well, they thought they had it done, but they had some issues in their language in the easements.
Is that, that's a little out of the ordinary. I, I suspect that would be an easement that they would own, not, not the city.
Correct.
And it would cross-
It would cross-
-two or three property owners?
Uh, one, two, three properties, yes. There's a, some of it is the Can, Preserve at Canyon Ridge, HOA, is one property within that subdivision, and then there's a small tract between Canyon, Preserve at Canyon Ridge and the Angel House property.
They're, they're only asking that we provide sewer, right?
Mm-hmm.
And would they be paying like a sewer tap?
We would, we would probably ask, yeah, have the sewer tap fees, and we would have to get consumption, water consumption from Waleska to bill them sewer.
Is there any estimate of what that sewer tap fee would be for that?
Off the top of my head, I can't remember. I believe it's a, it's, you know, it's a group home. I think they have 14-
14 people.
-rooms or something, so, off the top of my head, I, I can't remember what that was.
Okay. Anyone have a question there, Dave? Okay, thank you. Okay, discussion of magistrate agreement, first appearance hearings.
This is basically a, a formal agreement to a practice that we already utilize with Cherokee County. Right now, if, if an individual is taken to jail, they're supposed to have a first hearing within so many hours. Our city judge doesn't do that hearing. One of the magistrate judges does that hearing, and we're just adopting that formal policy through an agreement with Cherokee County. There have been a couple of instances across the state where litigation has come up about whether or not a city has had a process in place for these hearings, and so this just formalizes the arrangement that we already have. I believe Woodstock approved theirs a couple of weeks ago. I know Holly Springs, I believe, is working on it. Basically, all the cities in the county are trying to get their name placed with Cherokee County.
So, that's nothing new?
It's just- It's nothing-
-formality of what we've been doing.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Discussion of council policy manual.
The document that you have is a project that Ms. Stewart was working on before she left us, and what she was trying to do was take all of the various policies that the city had, they're not codified, and put them in one area, so that if there's ever a question or, or a concern, it's in that one place. And so, she had pulled together a number of these policies. It's not an exhaustive list of policies. There, we, we have gone through a review of several different things in that whether or not it's an adopted policy or a procedure, to make sure that our staff understands the difference between those two types of documents. For instance, there are some procedures that we have in the police department, that the police department has historically called a policy, and it's not really a policy, it's just their specific procedure. And so, the bulk of what you have here before you are the adopted policies of the city as they currently stand. We're still, you know, looking for some random policies that have been approved through the years in our, in our archives as we've been moving, but I wanted to get these before you, not necessarily asking you to adopt them, but for you to look through them, you know, it may be that you want to see changes to certain policies in here. For instance, I know that just since I've been here, we've changed our financial policy, the personnel policy has changed since we've been here with some updates, and the special events policy has changed. Some of these policies are much older, and so it, it's just a good document for us to look at and, and consider as we move forward. But I'm happy to answer any questions you might have, or get you any information you'd like.
Any questions, comments? Okay. City manager's report, I'll see, no, the city manager's report.
I only have one item tonight, and that is about the letter that we have received. It was mentioned earlier tonight in public input, we had received a letter from a, a project on Keith Drive, which would be for the rezoning for Light Industrial from Agricultural to allow for a concrete plant. I've already asked our community development staff to put together a list of concerns related to that change in zoning, so we're working on that from the staff level, but we're, we would like to be able to incorporate any comments that you have and bring that back to you before we submit that to the county. And I'm happy to answer any questions on that particular item.
Mr. Peppers, since I received one of those letters, too, I'm within 1,000 feet of that proposed rezoning, and obviously, my opinion is probably influenced by that greatly, and so I am not going to participate in that discussion with the council. Now, I have, everybody is, I tell you what, if you, if you won't touch your microphones anymore, all of you can speak, okay, at, at any time. So, but I'm going to excuse myself from any discussion, since I think there's going to be a question or two, maybe, and allow Mr., ask Mr. Grant if he would go ahead and conduct the meeting, since the only other item we have, we will be adjourning into executive session, and, and then we will not be coming out for any decisions at that point, so we will adjourn from there. So, I'm going to excuse myself and, and take a break and let Mr. Grant handle the meeting till the end. Yes, sir.
Thank you. I don't have this little handy little iPad, so hold up your hand if you have questions, so. Ms. McGrew.
Thank you. Mr. Peppers, I drove back there the other day after attending the county public hearing meeting where Mr. Chambers spoke, and the community spoke about it, and I'd actually never been back there. I'm perplexed as to how this property is zoned agriculture, and the only thing that's growing is semi-trucks and gravel. There's nothing back there but some maybe dwellings that are a little rundown, looks like a business, a lot of semi-trucks on gravel paths. How is this zoned agriculture and then used for this-
Sure.
-this way?
I think historically, it was zoned agriculture because it was owned by a broadcasting company, and they had a tower on it.
They had a what?
A tower, a radio tower, and that was the use of the property, and, and probably most of the area out there was zoned agricultural historically before it started developing.
It's just the default county zoning, so if nobody's ever gone and asked, it's just agricultural. just agricultural.
And you can then use it for anything, huh?
Well, you can use it for agricultural purposes, which has a long list of things.
There's nothing growing on it.
Doesn't have to be, it's not just agriculture. I mean, there's, there are other agricultural businesses. None of them are there.
I did see a dog.
Parking vehicles might be allowed in agriculture, but it's just a default. It's not like the county's chosen to make it agricultural.
If I might add to the conversation in response for Councilor McGrew, the property that you saw that had all of the trucks and that sort of thing is a separate piece of property than the 10 acres that is involved with the potential proposed rezoning. Our office has not received any official word that a rezon application has even been submitted or accepted at the county, but the property where all the trucks are, the county zoning map shows that is general commercial. The 10 acres that the, with the community meeting, that they say are requesting Light Industrial, was where there was an old communication tower. There are a couple of older residential properties that are on a piece of property. If you look at the county's maps, they say it's city. City map says it's county. We have a court ruling from Superior Court Judge that says that that particular piece of property is in the county, but the county has not corrected their zoning map. I've hand-delivered paperwork to the county on three occasions over the last four years trying to get that one piece of property shown as Cherokee County and not City of Canton with no success.
Is that why we're discussing it, because some property adjacent to it might be ours?
No, actually, the back end of that property goes to the midpoint of the Edoa River. Our new park property goes to the midpoint of the Edoa River on the other side. So, that's why the city received a letter, because we are the adjacent property owner to the south.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Wilson?
If I'm not mistaken, I believe the county advertised that their planning and zoning meeting will be this coming Tuesday night at 6 o'clock. Are we going to be, have our information prepared to take to planning and zoning on Tuesday night, on the 6th, to the county planning?
We pretty well have a draft that Mr. Peppers has already seen, that we're adding a couple of things and all, but like I said, our office hasn't received any official notice from Cherokee County, and under service delivery, they're required to notify us.
Well, it was, I believe the notification was in the paper last week that their first meeting for planning and zoning on this issue is 6 o'clock, Tuesday night, the 6th, November 6th.
I'll check the county's site in the morning and see, but last that our office had heard or someone had said that there wasn't a formal application submitted.
I may have misread it, but that's what I thought it said. I cut it out and put it so I could go.
Mr. Yellen?
Okay, well, in the interest of full disclosure, my mom lives on Governor's Walk Drive, which, and she did not get a letter, but the biggest concern I have with this project is the noise. Being close to the river, anybody that lives anywhere in any vicinity of the river knows how sound carries along that corridor, and so, I'm worried about that more than the dust and pollution and all that, because we're swapping one location on the river for another as far as that goes, other than the fact that it would be upstream from the water plant, and that is a big concern also. That's one thing that I really have a deep concern about, is the noise impacting those neighborhoods that, because it goes down into the, and up, and it just carries horribly. Quite a few of the neighbors have commented that they can hear Walmart's loudspeakers from their house in the Governor's Walk area, and I know that that would just be even worse. So, that's my main concern.
I do know, I do know that noise, the environmental factors, the flood plain, the issue with it being upstream from the water plant, all of those are already identified in the draft letter that we have.
Mr. Johnson stated earlier in his public comments that that was an island surrounded by city property. Is that correct?
The city, no, there's a parcel above it that they show as city, but it's actually county, and we're above that. We do, we do have the right of way to 575 that's in the city limits to the west of the project, and then to the south of the project is city limits. To the east of the project is also city limits, correct?
Correct. There are three parcels located back in that general area with this, that all three of those properties are unincorporated Cherokee County. Property across the river, city, and then on the three sides to the east, north, and west would be city property as well. In effect, it is an island.
The concerns you listed before, I think, are all valid, but, I mean, for me, at the top of the list would be, you know, the impact and the visual impact on the river and the park, and, you know, we're talking about extending our trails right across from that, if I'm understanding the location correctly, and we're talking about $1 to $2 million extend the trail, you know, along the river, a riverwalk there, and I'm not sure that anyone's going to want to walk, walk along the river and stare at the concrete plant, but I want to make sure that we, we certainly list that on the list, I'm sure you will.
There's also some question as to whether or not the applicant understands the buffer that's related to the river and that property as well.
Okay. Ms. McGrew?
Thank you. The property owners, Penn Hodge and that group, have they made any requests, statements, or inquisitions about annexing into the city?
Not to my knowledge.
And Mr. Grant, I was at that meeting, and there were many ideas tossed around, and it was made clear to Mr. Hodge and Mr. Schmilk that a buffer would be needed, and they were open to the idea of putting in a trail and an input or an output for the river, to have river access there, and making the area in that buffer rather park-like.
Any other questions or comments?
I was able to pull up the agenda for the Planning Commission on Tuesday. This item's not on the Planning Commission's agenda. They are meeting, but this is not on the agenda.
Oh, it's not on the agenda?
Correct.
Thank you. Sorry. Now, we'll have to go like watch election returns.
That's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
On another side, I wonder if we could discuss the park, the Great Sky Parkway? The first half has been striped and fixed, but the last part is really in bad shape. Is there any way that we could at least get it striped? I know there's some more development going on in the back part of Great Sky, and we may not want to put the top coat on yet, but it really does need to be striped. Is there any possibility that that could happen right away? Because it's very dangerous. I drove over there. It's really dangerous, and I think the residents there deserve some safer roads.
So, a couple of things that we've looked at, back when we approved the Sploes Project, that was one of the options that we had priced, just so we would know the cost of topping and striping that section of roadway. I believe it's from Stargaze Ridge all the way back to Greenbrier Way. The total cost for that asphalt work was $166,000, and I believe that included the striping as well. We have collected $53,000, some odd, in add-on fees in that particular neighborhood, so those could be used towards the project. What we also have going on is we have our engineer reviewing the roadway speeds in that particular area, properly signed, where signs are necessary. I think we need to get through that study first and the signage before we put any infrastructure in, just to make sure everything is, is designed correctly and that any signs that are placed out there are placed correctly. But ultimately, as it relates to the work, it would be up to the council to approve that and to direct staff to get that project done.
Okay. I, I really would like to see some striping done. As I said, I know there are going to be trucks going over that road as they're doing the new development in the back, and so it might, might not be a time for the topping, but I really think the striping, we should consider that. So, how do we go about getting that done?
Well, so, the question there would be is how much we would pay in striping, and do we want to pay it twice? Stripe now, then top in a future date and have to stripe again? So, we'll just have to bring the numbers back to you at the next meeting and let y'all, let y'all give us your thoughts.
Could possibly the fees have been collected? Could those go toward some temporary strapping, or is that something that is possible?
It could, but ultimately, if it's, if it's going to cost $100,000 to, beyond the fees to top and stripe, that may be the better route to go than to put temporary measures in and then have to come back and redo it in the future. So, that's what we would need to determine if, we want, we want to just go ahead and get the permanent part done ahead of, ahead of the curve.
So, you're going to get the cost for striping?
Correct.
And report back to us?
We'll get the cost for striping, separate from the cost of paving, and we'll also get back to you any, any things that, that come to light from the engineering study on that portion of the road and signage.
Okay, we, I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. McGrew, do you have anything?
I just wanted to reiterate that it's a very dangerous stretch of road. I lived back there for 12 years. I don't live there anymore, and cars just do not stay on their side of the road, and striping at least would be a step in the safety of the residents there. Thank you.
Does, does the city have any strapping capabilities?
Not for that length of roadway.
Okay.
I would not. I would contract that out.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments, Mr. Peppers?
But the signs, the city could do this.
Correct. We just want to make sure the placement of the signs and locations and all of that, and that's what we would do based on that. And I would mention this, just to embarrass him while I'm up here, his phone's been ringing because it's his birthday today, you know?
Oh, happy birthday.
And everybody's trying to wish him a happy birthday.
Happy birthday. Should we sing?
But now it's on the record, so.
Tell her your mic's on.
It's a happy birthday, Mr. Dyer.
Thank you.
Okay.
One more. Wait, Mr. Peppers? I'm sorry to ask you about this. I know it's a subject you do not want to broach.
Sanitation.
Can you talk trash to me?
Yes, ma'am.
We've gotten a lot of questions and a lot of heated calls, a lot of heated comments about trash, and do you have any update that we can take back to the residents?
Yesterday afternoon, we received a shipment of about 965-gallon recycling containers. We started putting those out today and doing that on the same service day that garbage collection has been done. So, today, for instance, we had Public Works go out and deliver 65-gallon containers in the Great Sky Laurel Canyon area, because today was their garbage service. And so, tomorrow, the Friday service route will get their containers that we have on the list. What's vitally important, though, is that if a customer has not told us that they want a container, send us an email or call us, we may not have a record that they have been a recycling customer in the past. So, those that are going out are people who have reached out to us and requested a recycling container, whether it's a Tote or it's a 65-gallon roll-off. We can get more containers if we have more people that want them, but they have to let us know that they want them. And unfortunately, putting a message up on Facebook doesn't necessarily mean that we see that, and so, we, we don't always know that they're wanting one just because they have ranted to their neighbors that they want one. But I think today, we delivered about 200 of those roll-offs on the Thursday route. Our goal is to have those 900 deployed by next Wednesday, so service day of Wednesday, we'll get theirs on Wednesday. And so, most of the phone calls that we've received in the last week have been about one of two issues, recycling containers, and when are we getting recycling containers, or backdoor service customers. And backdoor service customers are a little bit of a, of a learning curve for the new provider, because, you know, we dealt with waste management for 20 years, and they're just used to go into that house, that driveway, you know, to pick up garbage. And so, we've been working with them. If it's a miss and we've heard it from the customer, we've gone out with our, with our staff to collect, or we've contacted Advance, and they've sent somebody over there who's on the next day route to collect, so we're trying to work through those. But we only have, how many backdoors? 140 backdoor service customers in the city. So, out of 9,000 accounts, you know, it's sporadic as to where they're located, and some of that is a learning curve for them, but we are trying to work through it as best we can.
Did the backdoor service customers decrease with this new company? I understand that people were having to actually submit applications to receive the service.
In the past, we didn't have, we didn't have great data as to who a backdoor service customer was. So, for instance, we knew of certain backdoor service customers, the city did, and what waste management would consider a backdoor service customer, we might not have considered a backdoor service customer. So, initially, for instance, there was a street in Soleil, I forget the road, Balsam maybe, they had every account on that street listed in their records as a backdoor service customer, but they did that because every account on that street was a senior account, and they just assumed if it was a senior account, it was a backdoor account. It wasn't. We went out there, and every car on that street was pulled to a curb, and so, we had a lot of work with the last provider to get those numbers down. At one time, I think they, they thought we had 2,000 backdoor service accounts. We thought we might have 300. We're now down to 140. Sometimes, we would get somebody to sign up as backdoor service customer. That customer may have died 10 years ago, and the house was still receiving backdoor service, because there was never an audit to make sure that there was still a need. So, what we've done, we have a form, anybody who would like backdoor service that has a physical disability, they're unable to get their can down to the street, it may be age-related, it may be, you know, we've got one customer, I believe in her 90s, and she's been a backdoor customer for 20 years. We're working to get those affidavits in our files so that we have an account as to who those backdoor service customers are. On top of that, any resident can apply for backdoor service and pay an additional fee to get that service. It's a little higher rate, $24, $27.50. So, you may have, you may have an account where they have a long driveway, and they just don't want to take it down. They could sign up for that and pay an additional rate to get that, that service.
Is that $27.50 a month or a year?
A month.
Wow.
I want to ask a question about the homework.
This gentleman called me and said that he was a backdoor customer because of his age. He was a senior, and he said, when he came to sign in, sign up for that, that there was nowhere to put, that he was a backdoor customer because he was, because of his age, that he had to put a disability. So, he assumes that he can't get it, because he was, he's like 70-something, but he thought he had to have a disability.
Well, and so, that was one of the concerns that came out when we went through the process of, of this last bid for garbage, is what is a backdoor service customer? In the past, it, it was open to anybody who was a senior. We have a lot of 62-year-olds that don't get backdoor service, and, and it's hard to track if they have backdoor service, if they're actually pulling it to a curb, and one of the questions we were asked by our current vendor is, how many actual accounts are those? Because that slows routes down, because they have to, you know, leave the truck, get the, get the materials. So, we're asking the customers to fill out the affidavit. If it's age-based and they don't want to go through the process of having a doctor fill out the disability portion, they just need to sign it and let us know that, and we'll put it in the file.
Okay. Well, he said, he said, I gave him my driver's license, and they know how old I am, so maybe I'll get it. I haven't heard from him since, so, but I was just asking about, do you have to have a disability, or is age considered for backdoor?
Basically, all they need to sign off on is that they're the person in the house that takes the garbage down to the curb, and they're unable to physically do it, and that physical-
Could be.
Could be age-related. Correct.
Mr. Goodman?
I want to ask, because my neighbor said this yesterday. She said they missed mine for three weeks, and then I called you, and somebody came over and got it, and he said, she said, well, they missed it again yesterday, and mine, the same situation.
And mine, the same situation. I set out the garbage, they took it. I set out the recycling, it's at right there. It's at there until today and I finally just moved it. I said, heck with it. What's the situation with that? I know we were told we could keep those recycling cans if they hadn't picked them up. Are they not picking those up or we got to get a new one? Or I guess I'm not understanding it either. And neither is my, three of my neighbors. They're all calling every week, so I don't know.
So what we have done is we have asked that if there is a waste management can that's out there, recycling can, when it, when, when that customer is serviced for recycling, that Advance takes the can with them.
Now, what if they don't service them? Because like I say, that's been there for three days and they didn't pick it up any day. So, and mine and then two people next to me, that's, that's their question. They call me every day saying, what do we do?
Is it a waste management container?
Yeah, I said yellow one.
Yeah.
We asked Advanced Disposal during the first week or two weeks, every of the cans, make an exception and service that, service waste management containers. We were told in a meeting this week that that is a liability and sometimes they get a waste management.
I understand that, but they're not bringing, they're not bringing the other ones to swap them out. So that, I don't know why, but in, in that street and then one over on South Canton, the same way. And they said, we keep sitting it out there, but they, they don't bring us another can.
It's more of an issue on the garbage side, because we have certain residents that will put out well more than a can load. And they'll put out, you know, personal containers with garbage in them, and this is on a weekly occurrence. And so in those instances, we've asked Advanced Disposal, put out the cart hanger and just tell them they're going to have to have a second advanced can. We can't just have bags placed on a, on a weekly basis. I mean, ten, fifteen, twenty bags that are accumulating next to a can when they probably need two cans to begin with.
Well, they will furnish that second can?
At a cost. It's eight dollars, eight dollars and fifty cents for the second cart.
Imagine if they're throwing their trash. But the other thing is, because they're not going to, you know, they're, they're upset about the whole thing, the whole situation. But the other situation that I wanted to ask about, someone told me, you know, before we just put our loose newspaper in there, now we've got to have it bagged. And if it's not bagged, they won't pick it up. True, false?
Loose, loose newspaper?
You know, they put it in a recycling bin. It's just all newspapers, all folded. They set it in there. They said unless it's in a bag, they won't pick it up. Is that true or not?
If it's in a recycling tote, they should pick it up regardless.
A can, roller can.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I told them I thought that was not true, but they, someone had told them that, so I was trying to get it.
That's not true. Yes, ma'am.
Are there, is, is Advance going to put some more big trash receptacles behind Old City Hall?
We have slimmed down on some of the things behind Old City Hall, because some of our residents during the, during the garbage turnover decided that they would just dump whatever they wanted back there, regardless of where it was located. They didn't even put it in a can. And we were having Public Works go out daily and hauling off dump truck loads of material. So we've cut down, I believe we have two single-stream recyclers back there and one dumpster back there.
So you're not having to pull off stuff that's left outside W?
We still get some. Yes, ma'am. There was a lot more recycling out there at one point, yes. But at the time, recycling was broken up into various containers and now we're down to single-stream. Instead of having just a cardboard container, you can do single-stream recycling.
Mr. Yellen.
Well, I was going to mention also another issue that I've had more than one person, but one case Mr. Ingram is familiar with. It happens to be my mother. And she was lucky enough to get the advanced recycling bin, but they won't service it because they say she's not on their recycling list. And she's called them several times and they, that's what they've told her. And like I say, I know Mr. Ingram's aware of it because she's contacted him. But that's what we're running into. Some, I've heard other people say similar things.
And so what we've been doing, as we have been rolling out recycling containers, is updating the list that they do have. Ultimately, though, recycling is a complimentary service citywide and their responsibility is to pick it up wherever the container is at. We made that clear to them in a meeting on Wednesday. You know, it's unfortunate all the way around. You know, we have frustrations with Advance, but we also have lots of frustrations with waste management as well. Their last week of service, they just didn't service a couple of neighborhoods that we ended up taking care of. I believe we picked up two or three hundred of their carts and delivered them to our own Public Works facility and dumped them. And so when we get ready to send them their last check for that last month, we're going to deduct what we had, what we had to encumber as a city to do their service for that week. And so, you know, we knew there would be some issues with the transition. We're doing the best we can to get our records as up-to-date as we can. And we try to work with the customer as best we can to give them the service that they need, even if that's sending our own staff out there to, to take care of it in the interim. You know, ultimately, though, there's only, in my opinion, there's only two ways to perfect garbage for the customer. One is that the city does everything themselves, because we can direct staff to take care of things immediately. Or one is to let the customer decide exactly who they want to work with as a vendor. I don't think you're going to have a hundred percent happiness with either of those either, so.
Well, it is, it is a huge transition, you know, after being with the same vendor for, I think, eighteen years, was it? But I know it's been frustrating for, for everyone. I don't personally think you guys and the whole city staff has pitched in and helped. You know, I've, I've talked to you, emailed you on a daily basis, and I know you're getting that from, from everyone. So appreciate your work and your patience with it. So, and hopefully, I know there was a serious meeting with, with Advanced Disposal this week and, and I hope we're going to see some, some major improvements, so.
And we believe, we believe that after next Wednesday, when that next round of recycling carts go out, those phone calls will, will taper down significantly as it relates to recycling. And really, at that point, issues moving forward are going to be issues about the occasional miss on a backdoor service or a missed can or what have you. The great thing about Advance, and we've used this already, there's technology. They have the technology on their trucks to be able to show us exactly what was at the curb at that house, if it was out at that time, if it got missed. Customers have to remember that if it wastes, if their day was on a Tuesday, for instance, and waste normally picked them up in the morning, Advance may be running the route and picking them up in the afternoon. It may not be a missed service. It may just be that you've been used to getting your can emptied first thing in the morning. Or you've been used to getting your can emptied in the afternoon and you're not getting it out early enough for them to service in the morning. So if your day is Tuesday, have your can out by seven AM, six AM, seven. I, I have mine out the night before. If you can do that, do it. Have your can out and don't call us until later in the evening if it hasn't been serviced, because there's still that possibility that they're out there.
Thank you, Mr. Peppers.
Thank you.
I know our city attorney has birthday cake to eat, so if there are no further items, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to executive discussion, session to discuss litigation and real estate.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All members voted for the motion. We won't, we will not be coming back out. Thank you, everyone.
So you went to the information meeting. So what did you think about the public information meeting?